All right, it is seven o'clock. Welcome everyone to St. Andrews Episcopal Church in Encinitas's mayoral and district candidate forum. I'm Reverend Richard Hoag. I'm the associate priest at St. Andrews Episcopal Church. It's wonderful to have all of you with us. Thank you Mayor Blake Spear and councilpeople Crans and Hinzy. I forget, Hinzy is correct, right Kelly? Excellent, okay, thank you. I got that right. All right. Just for a bit of credentialing, St. Andrews Episcopal Church represents around 300 or so families in Encinitas and the surrounding area. And we are a church that focuses a great deal on our charitable work. But this candidate forum is also very much about our social justice orientation. This was put on by the Faith in Action Ministry of St. Andrews. And our purpose and our drive in our ministry is to look at the various charitable works that we do as a congregation, like our food pantry program that serves up to 300 families, like our Saturday breakfast program that allows anyone to stop in regardless of their stature in society to have a hot meal, as well as our showers of blessing program which provides hot showers, as well as haircuts and other charitable giving towards those who are less fortunate than many of us on this call tonight. And so Faith in Action looks at each of those charitable programs and says, hey, what is causing our need for this? And so that's taken Faith in Action down this road of thinking in terms of public policy. And that's why we are so grateful for all of you candidates who are here with us tonight. As we figure out, you know, how it is we can live out our faith and how best to go about the necessary changes we feel need to be made, this is a helpful dialogue with you all. And it helps us learn about our approaches as well. So we really appreciate your time. And I will pass it off to Jim after we do just a short opening benediction. So if we could all just take a moment, and if you're comfortable, close your eyes and take in a couple of deep breaths. Gracious giver of life, we gather this evening in hope and in forbearance. Our hope lies in the ability to have our say in a democracy as people of faith or otherwise. And we also pray for forbearance, to deeply listen, to deeply hear, to deeply understand each other. Thank you for the candidates who are present and those who aren't, for their willingness to serve us as the public. May we respect their words and may we ask the appropriate questions that'll help guide us all in our voting and in our lives as a society here in Encinitas. May we be good stewards of this little slice of paradise together. All this we pray. Amen.
My name is Jim Stiven. I'm a member of the Faith in Action Ministry at St. Andrews Episcopal Church here in Encinitas. And along with two of my colleagues, I'll be serving as your moderator for this forum here tonight. For our audience, and we have some 30, no, 52 it looks like, according to my sheet, people listening in on this forum, for your benefit, you may observe presently, or if you don't see right now, you will see soon, that only three of our candidates, Mayor Blake Spear, Councilperson Tony Crans, and Councilperson Kelly Hinzy are actually participating in this forum. Because unfortunately, the challenger slate of candidates withdrew from participation in this forum just earlier today. Let me explain just for a minute what happened and how we got to the situation. The date for this forum was set several weeks ago. Last Wednesday, that's October 7th, we sent out, our Faith in Action Ministry sent out to all of the candidates, all six candidates, a list of all of the questions that had been submitted by members of our team and also by all those who had registered as of that date. At that time, when we sent those questions out, we also did so with the understanding that we would be sending out a final agenda and a final list of questions yesterday, that is on Sunday. And we did that. We sent out to all the candidates a final list of questions and the agenda for today's forum. However, this morning, we heard first from one of the challenger candidates and then from a second of the challenger candidates, that they had some concerns about the questions that we had submitted in our final list of questions. During the course of the afternoon, we actually attempted to reconcile any differences that might exist, or any, try to alleviate any concerns that those candidates had. But notwithstanding those efforts, those three challenger candidates, Julie Thunder, Susan Turney, and Alex Riley, notified us this afternoon that they were withdrawing from this forum. Nonetheless, because this has been set for some time and we have a large number of people who registered and signed up to participate, we decided that we should go forward with this forum because there are important issues that need to be discussed. And Mayor Blake Spear and Councilpersons Crans and Hinzy agreed to participate and answer the questions that we had submitted to them. I want to emphasize that this, despite the fact that only the incumbent candidates are currently participating, this is not a campaign rally. This is a nonpartisan forum to which all candidates were invited. And we hope now that these candidates who are participating will answer the questions that we pose and address these concerns that we know that residents of Encinitas are carrying with them. I am going to specifically ask these three candidates who are participating to answer the questions by stating your position and your answers to these questions. And please do not try to characterize the position of your opponents who are not here to participate. Are we in agreement about that? Okay. All right. Under the structure of this, all of the people who are listening are muted and you cannot unmute yourself. However, there is a chat box. And so if during the course of the questioning and the answers that are given by the candidates, any of you have any desire for clarification of the answers or have a follow-up question that you wish to pose, you should put it in the chat box. And one of our members will be monitoring the chat box and can bring those questions to the attention of the candidates as appropriate as we go through. And as we have explained to these three candidates, we originally had planned that we would have the forum with the mayororal candidates first, and then secondly, we'd have the forum with the city council positions debating. But because we have just the three candidates here participating, we've decided we will pose the questions and then ask all three of these candidates to respond to the questions as we go through the discussion. I think that is all that I need to do except to tell one more thing, and that is that we've set up that the candidates will have a minute to introduce themselves. And then each candidate, after the question is asked, will have 90 seconds to respond to the questions that are posed. Because we're under a little bit less time constraints than we would be normally, we will not strictly enforce the 90-second rule. However, we do ask all of you to be brief and succinct in your responses. Linda Nolton, one of our colleagues, is our timekeeper. And Linda, when the time is getting nigh, she's going to raise a little sign that will show you that your time is almost up. Do you have the sign, Linda? Good. And then when the 90 seconds is over, we'll put up a stop sign. And we ask you to try to respect that, although you can certainly finish the thought that you're engaged in at the time the stop sign comes up. All right. With those ground rules having been established, I'm going to now call on the candidates each to introduce themselves. And first, I'll call on Mayor Catherine Blake Spear. You have to unmute yourself.
Oh, you did it for me. Okay, thank you very much. So greetings and thank you for being here today. I just want to say at the outset that I really appreciate that your social justice commitment, and I'm really grateful for the chance to talk about this topic explicitly. Because I think when there are forums on specific topics, it does reinforce that as a community value. And I think that that is the case in Encinitas, and I'm grateful that you've taken it on to host it. So I'm Catherine Blake Spear, and it's been my great honor and privilege to have served as your Encinitas mayor for the last four years. And I'm running for reelection for another two-year term to continue our successes. During my time, we have really been on a roll. We have tremendous neighborhood improvements. We have prioritized the public's health, protecting public health, and we are a safe and a financially stable city. I'm from a family who has been here for close to 100 years. So I'm fourth generation and my kids are fifth generation. And I really understand the heartbeat of our city. I feel that heartbeat. And I know that there are no simple answers to the concerns that we all share about development and traffic, homelessness, and climate change, among many others. And I tackle these problems by leading with our strengths, by trying to keep things in harmony, by both working to preserve and then also enhance our city. So I bring to this job a collaborative and open-minded, hard-working approach. And I'm also leading with my heart, so with compassion. Because I recognize diversity as a value, and I give it voice through my actions. I do, I care about helping our neighbors who find themselves without a home. And I proudly supported a parking lot for those who lost their homes but still had a car to receive services and stay overnight. So thank you for being here tonight, and I would be honored to have your support for my reelection as your Encinitas mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Catherine. Next, we'll call on Councilperson Tony Crans.
Thank you. I appreciate the efforts that you're making to get to the answers to some very important questions. And for me, having had the opportunity to serve two terms as a city council member, one of the most difficult challenges that I've had relates to those less fortunate than myself. And it has caused me some guilt because we haven't taken action sooner than we did with the parking program. But in the meantime, when we moved here in 1960 and I entered into the first grade, I was attending St. John's School and spent the first six years of school at St. John's. I am a Catholic and have also spent the last 10 years in the perpetual adoration group and have had great fortune to get to know Ken Pogenberg, Sandra Watson, Nancy Morgan, and many of the really strong faithful people of St. John's Church. And they have been working very hard with those less fortunate and living out the Gospels. And I greatly appreciate that. My own beliefs are that we serve as a secular government, and it's very important to me that we remain a secular government. But I do think that with dedicated people such as yourselves, that the opportunity to provide you the support that you need to do as much of the works that you're attempting to do is really important. So these questions that you're asking are critical, and I do expect that in the years ahead, they will become even more important as we emerge from this pandemic economy. So thank you for all the good works that you're doing. Faith in Action is, there's nothing more powerful than that. So keep up the good work. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Tony. And next, we'll call on Councilperson Kelly Hinzy.
Thank you and good evening. And I'd like to start by thanking St. Andrews for bringing forth the Faith in Action Candidate Forum to Encinitas and also for your longstanding involvement here in our city. I see a lot of faces here, which is nice, because usually these candidate forums are just one way. But to see these familiar faces of many of you who've shown up at our meetings time and again to advocate on a variety of issues, it just makes the community feel like a smaller place. I'm Kelly Hinzy, and it's been my honor to serve as your council member for nearly two years. I'm running to continue representing District Two. The official name is Old Encinitas. In the race for District Two, I'm the candidate who grew up in Encinitas, and I'm a lifelong resident, graduate of San Diego Academy, Pacific View, and Polacki Central Schools. I'm really proud of the experience I bring to this role. I'm a former elementary school teacher, past executive director of Lucadia 101 Main Street Association, and I'm a third-generation resident here in Encinitas. I really live in reverence of our beautiful surroundings, and I'd say that my top goal as serving this role is to reduce suffering for all of our residents in the many forms that we see it. I'm proudly endorsed by the Sierra Club, the League of Conservation Voters, the Encinitas Firefighters Association, among many. And if you'd like to see a complete list, I invite you to visit my website, kellyforencinitas.com. My name is spelled K-E-L-I-E. Now more than ever, I believe that we need our strong local leadership to stay intact, to keep our community united, and to focus on our mutual interests and our goals. I'd be honored to earn your vote honor before November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you Catherine, Tony, and Kelly for those good words. We're going to move to the questioning session then of this forum right presently. There are basically three topics we're going to be discussing, and there may be some tail-on questions that might be pertinent as well. We're going to be talking about homelessness, which also includes housing insecurity or inadequacy. We're going to be talking about affordable housing and land use decisions. And we're going to be talking about police practices and Black Lives Matter and some other related questions. For our first question, which will be relating to the topic of homelessness, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Teresa Baggett-Roberts. Teresa is a parishioner at St. John's Catholic Church, but is a member of our Faith in Action Ministry. She's also part of the St. Vincent de Paul ministry at St. John's. Teresa?
Here we go. Good evening, everyone. So I personally meet with people who have lost their housing or are on the verge of it. They've lost jobs or have physical or mental illnesses that prevent them from working. I've looked into their eyes and seen abject fear, loneliness, shame, and defeat. And just one event or a cascade of bad luck can tip the balance. I visited a family with three young daughters who were living comfortably in a nice apartment until their dad was laid off. His manufacturing job couldn't pay rent and was evicted. They had applied for unemployment and CalFresh benefits, but those take a while to kick in. They had run through all their savings, but the dad had just landed another steady job starting the next week. All they needed was another week in the motel to protect their kids from further trauma and start their journey back to normal. Had my volunteer group not been able to intervene, they would have ended up on the streets and been subject to the many difficult ripple effects from that. These people are our neighbors, families, couples, individuals, who are desperate enough to reach out to total strangers and trust us with their distress. There but for the grace of God go I. We are able to make a difference when we can empower people to take steps to improve their lives, not enable them to languish in the same situation. So my question is, do you believe that Encinitas has a responsibility to care for our homeless neighbors? Please answer yes or no, and then explain how or why. Kelly, would you like to respond?
Sure. So yes, I do believe that Encinitas has a responsibility to take care of our unsheltered residents. All of the differing perspectives tonight, even those that are not here present on the call, I think we are all, we all agree that we do not want homelessness to increase in our city. I'm really proud to serve on this council. We've been a solution-based council. We've demonstrated our commitment to preventing homeless, as demonstrated with the Safe Parking Program. And we've also been able to start addressing chronic homelessness with the HOPE Program, which stands for Homeless Outreach Program for Empowerment. Just this weekend, I learned that we had a gentleman who's been living on our streets, sleeping on our sidewalks for many years, who was able to find housing through the county's Health and Human Services outreach as part of this HOPE program. And to me, that's a sign of success. These are not pie-in-the-sky projects that we envision for the future. These are tangible programs that we are already delivering. On a personal level, I'm the daughter of two public school teachers, and my mom, Julie Hinzy, who's on this call somewhere, she taught at Polacki Central for 30 years. And I always knew from her, the kids from families in my own school who were struggling more than the rest. And even though my mom concealed that from her class and other students, homelessness has always been a problem here in our city, and I really think it's up to us to address it. I see I just have a few minutes left, but I'll say that those of you who are on this call, you face this reality every day, and you devote your own personal time and your resources and your talents to alleviating this. And I see it as our responsibility as your elected leaders to meet you there and empower you with the resources so that you can best do your jobs and that we can serve the most amount of residents in our city who need it.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Tony, would you like to go next?
Sure, yes, I do believe that we should be doing more for our unsheltered residents. I think that, you know, the reality is that the faith-based initiatives that have taken place have largely led the way, and I very much admire that. And what I think that the city should be doing is facilitating the efforts and making as many adjustments to the way we provide services as possible to empower you all who are doing the difficult work on the streets. We have historically had a partnership with the Community Resource Center, and I don't expect that to end anytime soon. But I think that what we need to do is engage the faith-based organizations in the city more effectively to ensure that we are operating in as efficient a manner as possible. You know, the bridge to a job and a home for that family that you described, you know, I know that the St. Vincent de Paul group has oftentimes stepped into that gap, and I do think that there are ways to, you know, make it so that the government is doing a better job of ensuring that that, you know, there's, the gap is filled. I do want to say, and I think it's important to emphasize for me, that the Health and Human Services Agency and the San Diego County Government is the most important player in this whole effort to end homelessness and deal with the mental health and physical health issues that you're talking about. So I do anticipate in the years ahead that the city will engage very effectively with the county.
Great, thank you so much, Tony. And now Mayor Blake Spear.
Yes, well, the answer to the question is yes. And both of my colleagues had great things to say there, and I second many of the things that they said. And I also just want to thank you for your very moving intro. I felt myself getting choked up just listening to your retelling of that. And you know, there's a great saying about the boat, right? When you're, when the other side of the boat has a leak, the boat isn't going to sail, and we have to all watch out for each other in that boat. And I think that that's really true. I mean, there's just no question that we are all part of this community and we need to help each other. And the people who need the help the most are those that you're describing, people who are struggling with that poverty and homelessness or being right on the brink of it. What I go back to is this reality that compassion is as compassion does. So I don't know a person who doesn't describe themselves as compassionate. But when you actually come, get down to, what are we doing about that? What is the act? And to me, that's why you want to elect people who are committed to the act, acting. Because we are in the position of making policy decisions and making decisions that are systemic. Because it's really important that we have all the on-the-ground efforts, which are tremendous. And like Councilmember Crans said, you know, the faith communities have just really stepped up in the city. But we also have to muster the courage, the political courage, to say yes to things, to say yes to a homeless parking lot. And if you look at, we don't have a shelter in our city. We don't, we don't have, we have a domestic violence shelter, but we don't have an actual shelter. And we don't have housing for homeless people. So what are we doing about that? I mean, those are the things that I want you to be holding us accountable to and you to be saying yes to certain projects. Because when they come forward, we need to have all the champions. And so I look forward to us continuing to talk about this. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Catherine. So on a related topic, San Diego County is operating a pilot program in Encinitas, which you've already referred to, called Project HOPE. This program places a licensed social worker on staff to do outreach to those on the street in Encinitas, often accompanied by a sheriff's deputy. The question is, will you support the HOPE program and even expand it to provide another social worker to serve those who are housing insecure, even if not on the street? Please answer yes or no, and why? And Tony, you can begin.
Yes, so the answer is yes. I am really very pleased with the preliminary information that I'm getting regarding the HOPE program. We haven't had a formal city council presentation, but I did get a call from a longtime downtown property owner who has been struggling with the homeless on his property for the last few weeks. And so I referred him to Stephen, who is the social worker. And they met, and Stephen gave him a handful of business cards to make sure that those who are homeless have the ability to contact him. And so there's a great deal of outreach going on right now, and it's, I think, what we need most, most of all. And so again, I say that that is a program that we are currently able to provide because of decisions that were made at the county. And so credit to Kristin Gaspar for making it possible for that to happen. And I will be advocating for more social workers. I'm a big believer in the work of Roseanne Hagerty, who has an organization called Community Solutions. And her approach is fairly straightforward. We need to get to know the people who are unsheltered in our community, and we need to understand what it is that put them on the street and keeps them on the street, and how can we address the needs that they have so that they will get off the street? There's no question, some of it's drug abuse, some of it's mental health issues, some of it's a choice. And so, you know, at least if we have the ability to reach those people and have a better understanding of that, I think it gives us the opportunity to do everything that we can to address the needs and get them off the street.
Great, thank you so much, Tony. And now Catherine.
Yes, so the answer is yes. Again, I would absolutely support that. And I think Stephen spends about half of his time doing administrative work. And so us being able to actually hire a caseworker, and it actually would be the county that would be hiring the caseworker, but I think that's something that's already in the works. Because we want to, he is very effective, and he's low barrier, so people can relate to him. And we would like him to be able to interact with more people and get more people into the pipeline. So I think it's important to note that one of the problems has been that our supervisor has not been adequately focused on trying to help us with homelessness in Encinitas. I mean, there is, this is being funded through the county. So this is the supervisor. And we have been, I've been on multiple calls with other mayors and councilpeople in North County, cities in North Counties, talking about how can we get more resources to this part of the county? And one of the things that's clear is that there just has not been very much engagement on this. And that, we need that to change. I mean, I think in order for us to get more services, like the social worker, we're going to need to have some change at that level. So I'm hopeful that that will happen soon, and we will be in the position of being able to get substantially more effort into that.
Great, thank you, Catherine. And now Kelly.
Yes, I am really pleased with the preliminary results of this program too. And I think where we're at right now is that it's assisting us to address the chronic homeless issues that we have in our city. And that, once we're familiar with the specific plights and individual problems that these individuals are facing, and wrap our arms around that, then we'll be able to tackle the population that we know of, which is around 80 people right now. And then I think once we've achieved that, we'll be able to really use this program for a more preventative measure. That coupled with Supervisor Fletcher's proposal recently to work with cities for these mobile to work with cities for these mobile crisis response units, the goal here is really preventative. So how do we get to people before crisis? How do we become familiar with their problems so that we can alleviate them before they're in a place of crisis where law enforcement has to respond? Or a business owner is the person who's having to manage this crisis? So when we recently did our city manager candidate interviews, we heard from a city manager who said that in her city, it was so hard to find the political will to even start working towards solutions. But that, looking back, so many folks are saying, I wish that we had done this when we only had a population of forty-four rather than a population of one hundred and forty-four. And so I think in the city of Encinitas, we're in a place where this is a manageable number of people that we'll be able to help. And then, from then on, it can be working on the prevention. So going from the chronic to the prevention is, I think, what we're all envisioning as the way forward.
Thank you so much.
All right, I'm going to move on to a related topic. And a couple of you have already mentioned reference to the Safe Parking Lot, which was put into effect back the earlier part of this year. When that issue came up, it was divisive and it was controversial. But I think, at least from our observation, the program has proved to be successful and has resulted in very little trouble. The sheriff's office has reported that there's been very little problem associated with the operation of the Safe Parking Lot. So my question to you is, what do you see as the future of the Safe Parking Lot in terms of whether it will be going forward, whether it can be expanded? And also a related question, and that is, there has been, and you can touch both these things, there has been some criticism, or was criticism, back when the issue came up, that the approach to the decision-making was not as transparent as it should have been. And so looking ahead, I'm asking you, you know, what do you see as the future for the Safe Parking Lot? And what will you do to ensure that the public feels that the process is fully transparent? And I'll ask Mayor Blakespear to respond first.
Well, thank you for that question. I think it's a great question. And it really caused me to do some introspection because it was really getting at the heart of this whole conflict that we've had in the city. And, you know, I know that the Safe Parking Lot did come as a bit of a shock to some people. And I am sorry about that. I think that it's really important to remember that, I feel like the way that my role is as the mayor is to walk arm-in-arm with the community as we are confronting both the challenges and the opportunities that are facing us. And so there's a period of time where there's like not an idea. And then there is an idea. And so when this happened and there was an idea, I feel that the city was transparent. We didn't cut corners. We had all the meetings in public. We had these great partners who were very involved with the community, Jewish Family Service and Leach Tag Foundation, providing a lot of information. But when I reflect on how difficult it was and how divisive, one of the things that I think is true is that we would have been better served by having had a broad-based community conversation about solutions earlier. Because the idea that, you know, I said there wasn't an idea and then there was, it's like for many people, Safe Parking Lot wasn't something that had been talked about. But to me, you elect people to be involved in higher policy discussions with other electeds with best practices and bring ideas back to the city. And we know homelessness is a problem and we know that this is prevention. Because these people are not the chronically homeless on the street yet. So we're trying to help them get back into housing. And so I think the Homeless Action Plan is now how we are trying to have a much broader-based conversation with the community. And that is informed by this experience with the parking lot to say, let's have this bigger dialogue. Let's talk about solutions. Let's confront the fact that we don't have a shelter. Let's talk about where someone's going to sleep tonight. When we have Stephen go out to him, where is that person going tonight? And where are they going to be in six months? And where are they going to be in a year? You know, those kinds of things, we have to reckon with that if we're really going to do something about this. So having that conversation as part of the Homeless Action Plan is definitely informed by all of the experiences with the parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Kelly, could you comment on the questions I posed?
Sure, so I will, looking back on this process, I remember something that was really significant to my decision to ultimately approve the Safe Parking Lot. And that was when I attended, and I think the mayor and I were the only two councilmembers who were able to attend this. It was sort of like a teaching, teach-in with the San Diego County Sheriff's Department to have the member cities come in and talk about some of the issues they faced. And one of the recommendations that law enforcement gave to the council members and the mayors who were sitting in that room was, we need more help. We need cities to help out the law enforcement effort because they're not able to deal with homelessness. That's not their role. And so they said, one strategy for cities is to approve safe parking lots. And so that really made me think, okay, well, if this is a strategy that will help us, you know, support law enforcement, but also prevent the downward spiral to chronic homelessness, this is something we need to take very seriously. And I think that the process might have been uncomfortable for the residents of Encinitas. And we went through a pretty, you know, painful process there. But as we're seeing this across the county become an issue that all cities are having to grapple with, we're not unique in that. And every city is going through the same difficult, painful process of, you know, coming to the realization, we need realistic solutions for homelessness. So I'm still supportive of safe parking. We really did make a lot of adjustments to the program based on what we heard from the community, including the location of the parking lot. We moved it to the interior of the farm. We changed the access so that there could be a left-hand turnpocket instead of backing off cars from the street. And we collected really detailed data so that we know that not only is it working, but our city hasn't gotten any less safe. And so those are the decision-making points that I look to, to think about what solutions we can keep in place. And is safe parking still good for the community? And I think that yes, it is.
Thank you, Kelly. Tony, do you want to comment?
Yeah, sure. And, you know, I think that anybody that was following along throughout the controversy is aware that I voted to oppose the Safe Parking Program in the initial vote. It came up later and required a second vote. And I did change my vote because the pandemic had hit. So it seemed pretty clear that, based upon the report from the sheriff's captain, that there was no increase in crime. And it was clear that the program was helping some people. It was not at capacity, but it was helping the people that were signed up, were receiving the benefits of the program. So I did support it the second time around. I think that the issue of process was, to me, unfortunate. And I have, as is fairly common, done a lot of reflecting on what we went through and how I would have done some things differently. But it is what it is and we are where we are. So what we need to do now is, you know, evaluate ways that we might be able to change it and make it better. And I would like to remind everybody that at one point, this Safe Parking Program was going to go into the city of San Marcos. And it was due to neighborhood opposition that it was, that they didn't pursue that. But the reality is that it could have been implemented in San Marcos without any emergency declarations. And so we need to explore what it was that made it possible for the city of San Marcos to be able to add the program without an emergency declaration. Because it's that process of emergency declaration and, you know, lease and sublease and some of the other gyrations that we had to go through that I objected to. And, you know, while we're going to cross this bridge when we get to it, once the program is over, you know, how we implement it in the future, I think needs to be looked at very closely.
Thank you. Tony, let me just call on my colleague, Betsy Vaughn. Betsy, are there any follow-up questions in the chat that need to be addressed?
Not at this time.
I'm thinking.
I think she just said not at this time.
You did say not at this time. Okay, thanks. Appreciate that. All right, we're going to change topics. We're going to talk a little bit now about homelessness and housing affordability and some land use issues relating to affordable housing. And I'm going to be asking some questions about, specifically about the housing element of the sixth draft, which is currently pending and being worked on by the city as well as by the state government. And for the benefit of our listeners, the housing element is something that's required under state law, where each cycle, the state through and the county determine the number of housing units that are needed to be increased in various locations. And particularly how those housing elements, housing units are allocated as to their affordability. And my question relates to the fact that as I read the current status of the housing element, the sixth cycle, including comments from the state and the updates that the city has responded, it appears that of the projects that are identified in the housing element, there are only about forty units that are identified that would qualify as affordable for the very low-income residents. And while the projects that are identified in our housing element do satisfy, easily satisfy, the total number of units that are required to be built, it is woefully short with respect to the number of units that are available for the very low-income or extremely low-income group. So my question is, A, is that correct? And B, how are we going to address that? What can we do, what can you do as mayor and councilpeople to try to increase the numbers of truly affordable housing units that are identified in the housing element for the very low-income groups? And I'll ask for Catherine to respond first, please.
Yes, well, it is true that the very low income and low income, the numbers that are projected to be built are less than we got credit for with the housing element update. And part of that is the complexity of how the state counts the units and the credit you get. I think the question is, really, how are we going to get more affordable housing in our city? And I think that we, as the current council, do want more affordable housing. You know, we are, we give voice to that, we talk about that. I think when we are moving forward, what we need to be really doing is recognizing that these projects almost always take subsidies and tax incentives and partnerships. And in order for us to be moving forward with something like that, we have to be willing to consider putting general fund money into it of some type. And I don't know what that looks like because I don't think it's in any way developed. But we need to be having that conversation to say, where can we do a project that is a hundred percent affordable? Or how can we buy into the projects that are already going to be built? Buy into the project so that a higher percentage of affordability is created in each project? And I think that would be a great solution. We talked about this, you know, Councilmember Cranz and I were on a subcommittee that worked extensively in public, with the public, trying to come up with solutions. And we talked about that. And, you know, in the end, you have to meet the deadlines. And we were under a court order and lawsuits and all this kind of thing. So, and so that's where we are. But I do think it will be something that we will be tackling substantially in our next term, at least with the current configuration of the council. If that stays, we will be working on this a lot because all of us care about this.
Tony, could you add to that?
Yeah, I would add that, in fact, we, as you pointed out, a requirement of state law is that we work on Cycle Six. And so some of these issues have been raised by the Housing and Community Development Department. So it will be something that needs to be addressed fairly soon. And, you know, for me, I think one of the things that becomes very clear in a city like Encinitas, where the dirt that these housing projects are built on is so valuable that it makes it very difficult for the free market to provide the affordable housing that our community needs. And so, you know, what you're looking at when you see the, those counts of the affordable, it's only the units that are deed-restricted under our inclusionary ordinance or density bonus that are being counted. Well, the reality is that many of these projects are going to be built with units that are of such a size that they indeed may be affordable under the market conditions, not to the very low, but to at least low. And therefore, the numbers that we're citing is, you know, subject to change once these projects are complete. And that's the part of the process that I've asked for more clarity on, is how does HCD, the Housing and Community Development Department, make those calculations once the project is complete? I don't like the idea of saying, okay, well, here's the number of deed-restricted affordable we're going to get. So that's all the credit you get on this particular project. I want the project to be completed. And then let's see what the rents are before we announce that we're only getting our deed-restricted. And so these are the sort of things that I think are really important going forward, that we have a fairly straightforward approach with the Housing and Community Development Department. And as Catherine mentioned, I think that as these projects cause the property to be reappraised, I think that the city needs to earmark the money that comes into the general fund to address these issues of affordable housing as well as homelessness and some of the other things. Because there is no question, there will be an increase in revenue to the city's general fund as a result of these projects as they get built. So a commitment to making sure that those resources go back to the issue of housing affordability, I think, are very important.
All right, and Kelly, could you please add your comments?
Sure, I will say that the city is notorious in the state of California for being resistant to development and new housing. And I think that all of us on this call, at some point in our life, lives have lamented the development in Encinitas and maybe even taken an effort to stop it somehow. And I think that for a long time, we've really stalled in this discussion because we've misunderstood the question the whole time. We thought that the state's asking us, will you accept more density? And that was never the question. The question was, how will you accept more density? And now that we're seeing the state law become more rigorous to ensure that if these affordable units don't develop as part of this housing cycle, that we're on the hook for finding out where they will develop, I hope that we, as a community, can reorient ourselves instead of saying, this is something we want to resist until the very last minute. And then, once we can't resist any longer, we're going to outsource this responsibility to the private market. I think if we really want to see affordability in our city, it's going to be because those of you on this call and our leaders are united in the fact that we need to change our tune on that. And we need to say yes to affordable housing. This is where we can do it. We need to build, I think, like the mayor said, we need to build partnerships, private-public partnerships to say, you know, can we steward a community land trust? Can we say, for every house sold in Encinitas, a Realtor would put this much money into a community land trust for us to buy a property together and site affordable housing? Other strategies for the near term, I'm supportive of extending a line of credit to ADU, folks who want to build ADU on their sites and could guarantee that they would rent that house out to somebody who qualifies as a very low-income bracket. I'm supportive of mixed-use residential and commercial on El Camino Real. I think that's a good place where you could get good value for smaller units. And I'm supportive of, you know, working together and asking you, what do you want? How do we engage different stakeholders in this discussion? And the ones who will actually benefit from this affordable housing? So yes, that's what I have to say about that.
Thank you, thank you for that. And as I understand it, there's an item on your agenda for Wednesday regarding the auxiliary dwelling units.
Yeah, we'll be getting an update.
Okay, good. A follow-up question, a related question in this regard, continuing looking at the housing element. The HCD, the Housing and Community Development Agency of the state, in their comments to your draft Sixth Cycle Housing Element, made it clear that the city of Encinitas does need to identify some additional sites for high-density housing triggered by the no-net-loss criteria. We, along with other people who are supporting affordable housing, such as Keys for Homes and Encinitas Residents for Responsible Development, believe that the city needs to maintain site control of any sites that might be newly upzoned to meet these requirements. So my question is, do you agree that additional sites need to be identified? And how would you prioritize the criteria for identifying those sites where the city can exercise site control and, over the upgrade and upzoning process? And I'll ask Tony Cranz to respond first.
Yes, thank you. I do think that one of the frustrating parts of the fifth cycle process was that we were under the gun, we were over a barrel. under the gun, we were over a barrel, whatever, you know, phrase that you prefer. And we didn't really have the opportunity to really think through some of the effects that these upzonings would, would, would create. Basically, you know, a market rush to try and figure out how to develop these sites to the maximum. And so the property owners ended up with essentially a windfall. But focusing on Cycle Six, one of the things that I want to look at is the idea of contract zoning, which says that, you know, we will consider rezoning your parcel, and it allows the city to lock in certain conditions, certain terms, to have a better understanding of the type of project that we will end up with. And, you know, for an example, we heard Mr. Randy Goodson out in Leavenheim come to the podium and describe a senior apartment complex. And it was one of those situations where, once we had decided that every community was going to end up with some skin in the game, so to speak, for the fifth cycle, that, you know, what the project he was describing as a senior apartment complex was, I thought, going to be acceptable to the greater community. And then, once the upzoning happened, he essentially decided to take a different approach, and we've seen the results, and, you know, we're, it's working its way through the process. But ultimately, this question of what he was pitching from the podium, and in fact, he wrote a letter that committed to a senior apartment complex as well, I think is a really important question, is, is if a property owner comes forward and says, here's what we're going to do, we need to have some tools to be able to say, okay, well, wait a minute, you're changing what you originally proposed. And so, you know, we, we need to get back to where you started. So that's one of the things that, you know, I am very interested in for Cycle Six, is how can the city have, have a little more control over that? And that may be by owning a parcel and doing the development ourselves, but it may involve some contractual agreements with property owners also.
Mayor Blakesford?
Yes, so your, the question is about site control, which essentially, the way I read that question is, you're basically saying, is the city able to guarantee what this project is going to be? And I think Councilmember Crans was just giving some ideas about how to do that without owning the property. And I guess I immediately go to the notion of owning the property, because then we're actually doing the project or figuring out the partners to help us do the project. I think it's reasonable for us to try to achieve one project. I think that no matter where we end up citing that project, we will have a really serious and difficult community conversation. Because having just gone through the process, well, the entirety of the time I've been in office, I mean, for all six years, there's been a perpetual conversation about where development could, will go, or could go, starting with El Camino Real, was what I watched go through the first process, and then that was pulled back, and then it was mixed-use development in other places downtown, and then that was pulled back, and then it was what we ended up with, which is basically kind of scattered throughout neighborhoods. So I think that, I'm a realist about the fact that state law changes a lot. So state law right now is becoming stricter, really, certainly by the year, but almost by the month. Like, just last, in the last week or two, the governor signed a bill that allows a 50% density bonus, and it's, it has currently been at 35%. So we could have projects pull back their applications and resubmit it with a lot more units, and that's under state law, that is just what they get. And so when you hear these different proposals, like another example was that there could be duplexes on every site in the city, every single family site could be a duplex. Or that within a quarter-mile of a transit station, which we have one downtown, there would be by-right development up to four, five, or six stories. You know, all of these things are possibilities, and it will greatly affect what it is that the city sees and is able to do. So, was that my stop? Okay, so, I think, I just think it's really uncertain.
Okay. Kelly, can you add?
Sure. I'll say that the ideas that Tony has about developer agreements that would be in place in advance would be really helpful to the council in establishing trust with the community. I think that the difficult thing that the mayor touched on is that state law is changing month to month. And when we got that letter from HCD, it was kind of, it was so disappointing, because here we are, having barely made it across this finish line for Cycle Five, and then finding out that there's still more to be done. And it's almost like we can expect the cycle to continue on and on and on. And it, and it can be disheartening, and it can be a little bit of the feeling where, okay, so, you know, we've accepted this, but where can we push back? And so when you ask about citing for locations, I continue to stay focused on locations where we have transit, where when the city is able to meet our climate action goal of establishing a shuttle for our city, that the shuttle could make these stops at different housing developments, where people could leave their car at home and get on the shuttle to run their errands and go to the beaches and our parks. So transit-oriented citing, transit-oriented citing. I think another, another requirement that's really attractive is that, I lost my train of thought. Another, another aspect is, you know, where are the schools, and where do we have safe routes to school? And so finding out these places where we have either underutilized surface parking lots, and, and can see in advance that some of these commercial leases are going to expire and not serve that same level of, of retail, can we, can we consider those as well? So those are the citing things that I, that I keep in mind when thinking about future cycles and locations.
Thank you all for those insightful comments. And Betsy, I think we have some clarifying questions in the chat?
We do, we have several. One, hold on, they're coming in as I speak. Are we counting the housing units? This is from Juliana Maxim. Are we counting the housing units that sit vacant, second homes, Airbnb, et cetera? Studies have showed that more units sit empty than there are homeless people, for instance, in LA. I bet our idle inventory would be more than make up for our, our HNA allocation.
Would one of you like to try to respond to that?
Yes, I, the, the, the process that the Housing and Community Development Department uses does not allow for counting those, those units that are vacant. The focus for HCD is all upon planning for the future. So if you've got a unit, they're not going to worry about whether there's somebody in it at the time, they just, based upon their calculations, all, you know, you're supposed to have a plan that includes this many for low and very low income, and this many for moderate income, and this, this many for high. And, you know, we are, we can't, there was always a suggestion, we should go back and count the granny flats that are existing in Encinitas and, and use those numbers with HCD. Again, they are only interested in what you're going to build in the future. So our accessory dwelling unit program that we have has been very important, but it's never going to get us to the number that we need. And so, you know, the, the idea of using these vacant sites for the homeless is a, is a different issue, but I don't think it's going to work for the six-cycle housing element. Catherine, do you have a different idea on that?
No, I mean, I think you basically handled it. I, you know, we don't, I don't think we're in the position of being able to say, you can't have a vacation rental in the city, you know, so, because we want to keep it all for housing. We, our regulations, like for our new accessory dwelling units, our granny flat program, is that they can't be rented for less than 30 days. So we're very mindful of not trying to create hotel rooms in neighborhoods, and we have a host compliance who's following up on, making sure that people are following the rules, and, and so, but we can't, you know, private property owners, we can't force them to take a unit and put it back into the housing stock. And Tony, you did a good job of explaining what it is the state's looking for. It's the future, it's new housing units. So all of these other things that are already existing just don't count.
Betsy, do you have other questions?
And then I've got one more from Jill Svensson. Why was a city-owned Quail Gardens property removed from consideration? It's actually from Bob Svensson, sorry.
And if I might add, there's also a question, the same kind of question regarding the L7 property.
Well, I think Tony should start with that question. Do you want to, do you want to?
Yeah, and, you know, the, the reality is that we were considering parcels on both ends of Quail Gardens Drive, at Lucadia Boulevard and Encino Boulevard, and the number of units on both ends of Quail Gardens Drive was significant. And so, you know, Quail Gardens Drive was a two-lane road, and, you know, as far as I was concerned, the idea of developing L7 was a bad one for Cycle Five. The reality is that the city owns that property, it was originally intended to be a park. There's a lot of effort to, hey, buy open space, let's, let's buy open-space land. And the reality is, the city owns some open space. Now, that said, the fact is that we may need to, at some point, use that land, either through the sale of it for a project on a different parcel, or developing that parcel there. It just was not something that I was prepared to rush into with Cycle Five. There were, there were too many questions. Frankly, I think that if the city's going to put some property into the housing element, it should be the public works yard, or we should work more closely with North County Transit District and develop transit-oriented housing in our downtown, adjacent to City Hall, and perhaps redevelop City Hall site. There are other ideas that I would much prefer to pursue instead of L7. And the, you know, I get that HCD is focused on L7, and, and, you know, that's their, they can be focused and, and obsessed with that parcel. The reality is that the council will get to decide, and in this particular case, it was a very close vote and quite controversial. And, you know, I recognize that, you know, things happen with free votes on the city council, and it'll very likely come up again. I don't see my position changing anytime soon, I think that there are other things that the city could do, and I hope, I plan to vigorously pursue them. In my role as board chair at the North County Transit District, I've had the opportunity to advance some studies and some planning for how to use underutilized North County Transit District land. Having asphalt parking lots, I don't think benefits the communities in which those sit. And, you know, obviously, there is a need for parking, but there are ways that you can construct housing and, and also find places for the parking as well. So we're working real hard to make that transit-oriented development a reality, both all in North County, as well as in the city of Encinitas.
Catherine or Kelly, do you wish to add your own thoughts about that?
Yeah, I'll add a few thoughts. So, you know, the removal of L7 was, was very painful for me personally. I was somebody who supported it with one other member, so I was on the losing side of that. And it was one of the, you know, most difficult inter-council discussions, like, that we were having. And I think it's a reflection of how difficult it is in our city to have any type of housing, affordable housing, market-rate housing, higher-density housing. It just ends up being filled with acrimony and dislike and conflict, and it was tough. And so I, I lost that vote, and I didn't want to sabotage that or second-guess that on my colleagues' part, and I respected that. So when we were moving forward, I mean, I recognized that we were, everybody's using their own, their own moral, their own compass and their own analysis of the electorate, right? We were trying to get this through a vote. So we were taking this to the voters, and I think my colleagues who, who didn't want L7 on there were partly responding to the tremendous amount of negative feedback from the community around there that was saying, we, under no circumstances, want this. So they were saying, it's more likely to pass if this isn't on there. And, and so then, it didn't pass anyway, right? The measure U didn't pass. But that decision was part of the compromise. You know, I saw Measure U as being a compromise plan, and so then, when we were put under a court order, we had 120 days to adopt, we didn't have time to go back and do more community meetings and more outreach and more analysis. That was the plan that that council had put together as the consensus plan. And to me, it, it made sense that I would support the consensus plan. And so not try to undermine or, or change it, or do something at that stage. And so that's, you know, what we did. And I, I still stand by that. I mean, I think that being respectful of my colleagues and the vote and losing the vote meant that that was the plan that we had all decided was what we were going with. So, so I don't, I don't, yeah, I, I feel like that was the right thing to do at that time.
Thank you. Kelly, anything to add?
Well, I wasn't on council at that time, but I did follow that discussion, and to me, it seems like the mayor's comments summarize the general feeling, that if, if L7 had stayed on the map, that it was unlikely to have passed a vote by the people. So while it's disappointing that it makes it harder for the city to put skin in the game of affordable housing, I do think that there are other locations, like Tony mentions, with the NCTD parking lots that are close to downtown and would make lovely places for our elder, elder members of our community to live and carry out a very healthy lifestyle in a very walkable part of town. I think that those are, that, that's a good spot.
All right, well, thank you all, I appreciate your, your thoughts on, I know these are difficult and controversial issues, but your, your responses are all very thoughtful and appreciated. We're going to move on to a different subject than presently, and I'm going to call on my colleague, Gigi Miller, to ask some further questions with a little bit of dialogue. Thanks. Unmute yourself.
The joys of Zoom. I'm Gigi, and I just want to thank the candidates for participating in our town hall tonight. I have a series of questions that concern inequities that we see around, especially our more marginalized neighbors. We see that Encinitas has had its share of peaceful protests, asking for police reform aligned with Black Lives Matter. The Episcopal Church and the interfaith community have also called for police reform. We do understand that Encinitas policing is provided through the San Diego County Sheriff's Department, and we're interested in your general strategies for influencing the sheriff department going forward, and specifically, your position regarding de-escalation and anti-racism training. And Catherine, could you take the first crack at that question?
Yeah, sure. So at the outset, I just, I feel like I need to say, because of the misinformation that's been out there, that I am not on any type of an anti-sheriff platform, or, or trying to, to be anti-sheriff or defund the police, you know? So I think in Encinitas, we have, we use the sheriff along with 10 other cities that contract. And clearly, the racial justice issues are top of mind and really important. And so one of the things we did is we had a forum with the sheriff so that he could ask question, answer questions from the community, and explain things from his perspective. And I think that was, it was good, I'm glad we did that. I think it provided a lot of information, you know, I listened to the whole thing, I think many, many people did. And we need to be always committed to self-improvement, and recognizing that a lot of these implicit biases are not things that we're aware of, right? They're things that are happening without recognition. And so having ongoing anti-bias training, de-escalation training, and being committed to betterment in those ways for, for an equitable approach to law enforcement is really urgent. The city, you know, is really not in a position to be unilaterally telling the sheriff how to act, so, or what to do differently. But in, in conjunction with the county and with the other 10 cities that contract, the labor negotiations go on, and, you know, I've never been part of those, but I think that we would be able to get changes to the policies that drive their training, if we were able to have clarity about what the consensus was that we wanted to see. And I would say, from my perspective, we don't currently have that clarity. I, I don't feel, like, I personally know what other cities and the county and our community, who's very engaged in this, specifically would like to see changed. So I think that that is part of what would be required, you know, as part of first steps.
Kelly, would you like to add anything? Thank you.
Sure. So I, I'd also like to set the record straight, because there's been a lot of misinformation that it's my goal to defund the police, and that is not my goal. I don't support defunding the police here in Encinitas. I think we do have a balanced budget, and when we dig into these issues, we don't have a lot of community members who are feeling overpoliced or feeling unsafe due to the presence of our law enforcement here in our city. That being said, we do support increased accountability, and we do support increased transparency. And we were able to bring forward a really public conversation hosted by the city and Captain Taft to discuss, where are we failing and where can we do better? And some of those issues that were identified is in the issue of mental health and support for mental health services, and that's something we've already discussed tonight, but I would like to see more county resources going towards that effort. We also learned that the, that the law enforcement here in Encinitas feels sometimes overburdened by needing to respond to domestic violence disputes, and that that doesn't end well, and they're not equipped for resolving those kind of disputes. So how can we replace... So how can we replace, you know, mediation or better services for people who are experiencing turmoil in their relationship so that it doesn't result in violence or a need for law enforcement to respond? Other great ideas from the community have included disability training for our law enforcement officers. How can they learn to better serve somebody who is experiencing a disability or is somebody who has autism, who might not respond in a way that a deputy would expect? And so these are great ideas that come from our community. It's not the council members saying this is what we need to do because we haven't seen anything, but, or haven't seen everything, but we have to at least be open to having that conversation. And we have to be ready to say, for a long time, we've put all of this on the plate of law enforcement, but maybe there are other solutions that we can move forward without having to talk about defunding circumstance.
I attended that, that law enforcement forum and found it very enlightening myself. So, Tony, would you like to?
Yeah, I would just add that we did have our, we did have our local forum with Captain Taft. And, and not long after that, the sheriff held one, held a forum and, and he had a group of elected officials that was providing him some feedback. And one of the things that I wanted to promote was this idea of, of, you know, shifting paradigms and not being old school. And I think that that's one of the things that I see as a council member is that we, we do the things that we do because that's the way we've always done them. And, you know, I don't think that's necessarily in the best interest of either the community or the, or the police officers. They do a very dangerous job and they, for the most part, do it well. But it's impossible to not see that in our country, we're, we're seeing, we're the experiences of others, especially people of color, is quite different than the experience of me and, and people that have the same complexion as me. And so I think it's important that we do everything that we can to further the conversation about how to make policing, you know, not something that people of color in our community fear. And, you know, the way to do that, I think, is with an open dialogue. The way to do that is with, you know, an increase in training. And we're going to pursue both. The city currently spends about $33 million a year in for public safety between the sheriff's contract, the firefighters and the marine safety. So we're, I am very proud of how safe our community is. And it will continue to be safe. And we will continue to work with the sheriff and the county to improve policing in Encinitas.
Do you mind if I make one more comment on this topic? And it's in relation to one of the questions that I've seen in the chat. So I just want to clarify that there's a reference to Kelly and me sending, having a letter about other municipalities, asking them to defund the police. And I just want to clarify that, that this is the summit that Tony was talking about, that getting together with the other 10 cities that contract with the police, sorry, with the sheriff, and actually talking about what are some of the things that are important to us? And there are cities like Imperial Beach that are really unhappy about their law enforcement cost. So they are saying, this is taking up way too much of our general fund budget. We need to reduce the cost. You know, other cities are more interested in racial justice issues. Other cities are more interested in having more law enforcement. You know, like the city of Del Mar has felt like they haven't had enough responsiveness from, from sheriff's department and they would like to see more. And I'm not saying that Del Mar is saying this in the context of Black Lives Matter, but just historically. So every city is really different with what they bring to the discussion about the sheriff's contract. But having that conversation as an actual region was a good idea. And Kelly and I were, were trying to see if we could generate that so that we could act together and potentially see reforms if we felt collectively we needed them. And I think what happened from that was just, it was clear that everybody's in a different place in terms of the city and then the elected who represents that city who happened to be there. So I didn't come away feeling like there was consensus. And that's just the nature of things, you know? That kind of stuff happens all the time. But it shows, you know, engagement on the part of your electeds. Like, that's why I'm saying you want people in these elected seats who are engaged in these bigger policy questions and who are doing fact finding and who are trying to solve problems and, and really trying to bring solutions back to Encinitas. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. Does anybody have anything else on this topic? Okay. We mentioned it a little bit. We talked about the Hope Project. And Captain Taft in his, in that law enforcement forum that we have with the city mentioned the PERC program as well, the psychiatric program. And, and actually mentioned that he might be inclined to, to, to expand that program if he was given the funds to do that. John Van Cleef, the CEO of the Community Resource Center recently described Encinitas as a mental and behavioral health desert. What ideas do you have to make mental and behavioral health services widely available to everyone in Encinitas regardless of their ability to pay? And these kinds of bringing in perhaps the Hope Project, the PERC project to help as well. Tony, do you want to start us off with this one?
Sure. And, you know, I, I think that there is no question that we could use additional health and human services focus by the county in our city. And so my expectation is that in the years ahead, we will aggressively pursue that. I also think that there's an opportunity to work with Scripps Hospital, a regional facility that is based in Encinitas, that we might be able to figure out a way to be able to, in a more effective way, treat some of the mental illness issues that we see. People are afraid, you know, because someone's acting crazy. And, and, you know, with the resources that we have, we should be able to address that. I do also know that Tri-City Hospital has, you know, recently agreed to build a facility to address some mental health issues. But the city, the city of Encinitas is never going to be able to use the amount of, of resources that are required out of our general fund. We definitely need a partner in the county to address the issues that Mr. Van Cleef raised.
Kelly, do you want to add something?
Sure. I'll say that I think the problems we're facing are uniquely pertinent to this moment in time. And as I mentioned earlier, this 28th decision by the federal court, Ninth Circuit Federal Court in Martin versus Boise, made it so that law enforcement isn't able to treat homelessness as, as a law enforcement issue. So the first time in a really long time, cities aren't, aren't, you know, having homeless people that are moving around from place to place. We're really faced with having to come up with other tools to add to our toolbox to, to encounter these, these difficulties. And so I think mental health and an increased focus on that is what we need to do. Councilmember Krantz brings us up often from time to time, the importance of having a public health commission. And I love that idea because we see such high engagement from our other commissioners who bring their expertise to the table. They drive these conversations and they make really solid recommendations to city council that have already been vetted by staff and they've already leveraged all of the, the expertise and resources that we have in our community. So I would love to see that take place as a way that we can better support mental health in our community. And that's, you know, it's not always just counseling. Sometimes it's just the specific focus on what we have here in, in community and in our outdoor spaces and in these places where we can, we can gather together and reaffirm one another's humanity and this commitment to mental health together.
And Catherine, what's your take on that?
Yeah, I think those are good points. You know, your question was about mental and behavioral health deserts. And, and ultimately really it is the county that does that. And so I really do believe we could see a substantial difference with a change in our supervisors in North County. And I mean, when you think about things that have happened in South County, like for example, the convention center being used to house homeless people, you know, that's not the kind of solution that just pops up, right? Like, that's the kind of solution that takes serious advocacy from Nathan Fletcher, the supervisor, Mayor Kevin Faulkner, the business community, to be able to, to transition a facility that's used for businesses to be housing homeless people. You know, that's, I, I, I'm sometimes just impressed with what they're able to muster the community will and, and, and political leadership to do. And so I think that we, we, we're lucky that we have Scripps Hospital and we have North County Health Services in our city. We actually have the ability to have more mental and behavioral health. We have sites where medical treatment is taking place. But, you know, how well integrated is all of that into the system? I actually think there's a lot that's already going on that doesn't get a lot of attention. But it is the case that we, there is a lot of money that is available at the state level coming through the regional task force on the homeless, going to county decision making that could be devoting it to North County. And right now we are, we are simply not getting our share and that advocacy has not been unified to say, we want it here. And in many ways, I think it takes the cities to say, this is what we want specifically. We want this money for this thing and then to push and fight for that. One of the things we definitely fast for is social workers. But if we're going to start talking about the land use decisions, you know, to have different things happen around land use, then those are going to be those bigger conversations with the community that we need to be having.
And I think Catherine, one point she makes there talks about the jurisdictions in the North County. And the, the reality is that many of the issues that we're talking about tonight can't be solved in one city or another. They are regional in nature. We know that when the police officers in Carlsbad decide that they're going to move homeless people along and those homeless people head south, once they get across the Carlsbad-Encinitas borderline, Carlsbad's, you know, and so we've got the homeless. It's, it happens throughout the region. And until we as a North County, you know, leadership address the issues regionally, I think we're going to continue to have problems like that.
And could I ask a follow up to that is, do you have any strategies for that? Any strategies for kind of bringing those regional partners together?
Well, it's, it's pretty dicey. Mayor Blakesford has been participating in a regional conversation. I, I attended a couple of meetings. An interesting idea that came up at the first meeting was the idea of creating a joint powers authority that would have a little bit more, they would not be under the same political pressures. And they would theoretically bring ideas that were not subject to the jurisdictional pressures that we all feel. When we did the homeless parking program, there were, you know, quite an outcry from the local. And so, you know, JPA might be a good approach. We have joint powers authorities for our, for a number of different utilities that we have in the North County. And, and the idea of creating a joint powers authority that might have some responsibility over addressing issues of homelessness, I think is, is good. It allows all of the jurisdictions to participate in the funding process. Theoretically, it could also be used to address issues related to affordable housing, especially that for the very low income. So I would encourage exploring that. But ultimately, until you put together an organization that has leaders from each community that are committed to solving the problem, it's going to continue to be jurisdictional struggles. So.
And yeah, I think that's a, it's a great honest point. And, you know, if you're reading the newspaper, you see that there are proposals, real proposals that are falling because of really the political pressures that come when there's a city that tries to buy a hotel. And even if it's in the middle of a scramble of freeway on and off ramps, you know, there's a very much a fear from communities. And I understand this because nobody wants to put out the welcome mat. You know, there's, there's, the fear is that when you do anything to help people, you're going to be this magnet and all of a sudden you're going to be overrun as a city and it's going to ruin our quality of life. And I understand the fear that comes with that. But I, I always try to, to go back to the reality that it is incrementally getting worse and will continue that way if we don't start to have solutions that help the people who are here now. So most of the people that we are providing help for are here now. If we're providing help to somebody from Carlsbad, I'm okay with that. I know Carlsbad is providing help to somebody from Encinitas. You know, there's, there's obviously, people are crossing over boundaries to some degree already. But I think we have to have the community will that, which I've been so happy in Encinitas, you know, when we did make the decision about the homeless parking lot, it was so heartening to have so many of you from this call and our, the uniformity of our faith community, the social service organizations working in homelessness, the school districts, the YMCA, you know, all of these different partners that are dealing in an ongoing way with homelessness and trying to solve it, saying, this is a good idea, please vote yes, because we have to have that. And so how do you generate community will? How do you build that momentum for it? I think you do things like having this forum, you engage on this topic and you, and you try, you make it a priority. It has to be something that we as a community care about. And, you know, we're here to do that as the elected leaders, but we, we of course need to be standing on the shoulders of the community that cares for it. And I'll just bring up, I just want to say just one briefly is like the, the Del Mar Fairgrounds. You know, there was a proposal for homeless housing at the Del Mar Fairgrounds. And when they pulled out, they said the reason was that there was an overwhelming amount of community opposition. And, and, you know, you think like, that's a state owned property right next to the five freeway in the middle of the county, very little in North County serves that. You know, there probably could have been some homeless housing there that would have been great. Maybe it'll come back, but you just think about this and you look at it regionally and you say, wow, this is a struggle everywhere.
I think we have a clarifying question from the chat.
We do. It says, this is from Ruben Flores Said. Sorry if I said your name wrong. "Thank you, Councilmember Krantz, for recognizing the challenges with the homeless population and how this is a regional issue. Do we have data helping us understand where the homeless population is coming from? Understand the source could help us determine the best solution."
Well, I would, I, I don't have the answer to that off the top of my head. Maybe some of my colleagues do, but I think that ultimately, one of the things that Stephen, the social worker with the Hope Program is doing is getting to know the homeless folk who we have in our community. And once you start to get to know them, then you learn some of the details of their lives. I anecdotally have learned that there is an increase in new faces. It's not significant, but there have been some new faces. And, and no, I, I don't think anybody really knows where they're coming from. But, you know, again, the work of Roseanne Hagerty and the efforts that people in the faith-based community, as well as the social workers at the county, I think are going to be critical for getting to know the people that are homeless in our community.
And I'll just add to that, I think it's important to just remind everybody that in the bigger picture, the macro data shows that people who are homeless are largely from that community. So community, most people, I mean, you hear this all the time where people say, well, if I were homeless, I would get on a bus and I would go to Southern California because the weather's better and I'd rather live on the street in sunny San Diego than in Michigan. But, but the reality is that when you actually do the surveys of people, where was your last address? People have moved places for all the reasons they do, right? A job, family, community, you know, the many reasons people move to a city. And then they end up with these series of things that go wrong and they end up homeless. So is there some percentage that's transient and coming from Northern California? Of course there's some, but mostly I think the populations are from within this area.
Yes, I'll just add that the homeless action plan that we've, that is in draft form right now provides some more interesting insight and data into the, the residents who are homeless living in our community now. And that's more data than we've had ever about who these folks are, maybe, you know, what their background is and what their demographic is. And I do, from the research that I've done, what the mayor says is totally accurate. I mean, I, I know a lot of these faces, I've seen them for my whole life here in the city of Encinitas. And I know them to be residents who formerly were housed. I think that there are the faces we see on the streets all the time. But also this community has become an extremely expensive place to live. And we have neighbors of mine, they're, they're homeless, but they're living here in, in my neighborhood still because somebody is allowing them to crash on their couch or park their truck in the, in their driveway. And so there's a lot of homelessness that's visible and there's a lot of homelessness that's invisible. And most of it is generated from within our community. And so I think that's why it's so important that we're having these discussions about local solutions because this is, this is our problem to solve.
And, and to Ruben's point about the data, he's correct. We need better data. We, once per year, we do a point in time count where groups of people go out at four in the morning and they do, we do, we hit, you know, we use the grid method to, to look under bushes and in cars and try and count the number of homeless people that are in our community. And it's very unscientific. And I think that what it does is it leaves us with too many questions about the people that have been counted. And so again, I think that the right way to do this is to get out and get to know each individual. individual and find out what it is going to take to get them off the street.
And I'd just like to make one more comment if it's okay. I think it's always useful to personalize these things. And I know when we were talking about the homeless parking lot and where it was proposed, a gentleman reached out to me and he said, you know, I, my kid attends Cardiff schools just like yours. And I went on the field trips and I did that, all of those things. And when we got divorced, I didn't have the money to stay in this community, so I moved into my car because I want to be near my daughter and I want, I love the beach and I want to be near it. And, you know, so the idea of moving to outer Temecula or something where he could afford it was not workable for him. That didn't work priorities at all. And so, you know, now he's staying in the parking lot instead of staying on the street. And, and I, it's important to like really remember that these are people who are part of our community. It's not just that they've been on the streets for a long time, it's that they're falling into homelessness because of the affordability problems, because there's not anywhere where he could find a place to live.
That's a really good point. And, and, and we've seen that just dealing with, um, the guests that we have at our, um, at our different outreach ministries, um, getting to know them, hearing their stories, finding out about them, um, decreases some of the stigma around who those folks are and we get to know them and they get to know us. Um, and our challenge, what we've been exploring recently, just a little plug for us, is that we're trying to figure out a way to tell those stories so that people, to kind of demystify the whole, um, issue, if you will, or put a face on it as we will. Um, so if we've covered the mental health behavioral homeless, I'm going to shift gears now to, um, climate change a little bit. Um, so global sea level rise and climate change that intensifies wildfire risks are serious threats to Encinitas. Do you agree that human behavior contributes to global warming? And what are the most impactful things that Encinitas can do to mitigate these threats and to ensure that our residents and businesses thrive? Who wants to take it? Uh, Kelly, we have a.
Sure, I'll start off. I, I live with a climate scientist and so I have to become very familiar with the reality that we're facing. Um, yes, I do agree that human behavior, specifically the burning of fossil fuels, has caused global warming that's resulted in climate change and all of the cascading effects that we're starting to see across the state of California. In Encinitas, we are surrounded with true splendor and I think that we are all reminded every day when we look at the ocean, when we look at our beaches, when we see this diversity of ecosystems that we are stewards of here in the community, how important the responsibility is that we carry to ensure clean air and clean water and that we are doing our part to not only reverse the effects of climate change, but that we're also building our resiliency for the parts of it that we're not going to be able to overcome as one city. Um, in Encinitas, I believe that the three of us on the call are the leaders who seriously take these climate-related hazards most seriously as the biggest threat to our residents' quality of life and to our small business success. So our climate plan, our climate action plan is really brilliant in that a lot of these methods, these strategies are legally enforceable. We have to do these things, um, to prepare for fire, flood and sea level rise. On-road transportation continues to be the largest source of emissions here in our city. And I see this as a, a convenient problem for us to have because we are such an outdoor-oriented community. And the main thing that we are asked most often about is how to get people out of their cars because so many people want to bike and walk around the city. So if we can achieve that, then we can reduce a lot of our emissions. Um, it looks like I'm supposed to be wrapping up here too, but I will say that it's, you know, it's important that our businesses, uh, have beaches. And so we have to do everything that we can to manage the effects of coastal erosion and get sand replenishment here on our beaches so that we have the recreational benefits and the benefits to creation of habitat that's rapidly deteriorating due to rising sea levels. And that we choose to implement projects like the Cardiff Beach Living Shoreline Project that demonstrates a nature-based solution that's also protected our highway, our infrastructure for longer and also the surrounding businesses there whose, whose livelihoods are dependent on that people can still reach them and still, and still get there. So, um, there's a lot to say about this, but.
Thanks, yeah. Unfortunately, we have to kind of keep it moving so that we can give you an opportunity to make your closing statements, but Catherine, do you want to weigh in and then Tony?
Uh, yes, there's no question that climate change is happening, is human-created and that we need to take action. And we see this in our city. I mean, we, we face wildfire on the eastern side and we face sea level rise on the western side. And, um, we, our climate action plan is a gold standard plan. It has accountability. It is looking at the sources of emissions. So it's looking, as Kelly said, at the transportation sector, the largest generator of emissions, the energy sector where we have recently begun the process of moving over to a community choice energy program with other cities so that we can have clean energy sources. We're looking at our waste sector. Um, and all of these things are focused on us doing our part to cool the planet. And, and what, what is true is that cities will lead the way when it comes to this, especially right now in the absence of federal leadership. Uh, so we need every city to be highly engaged in this and to care about it. And our climate action plan is really the backbone of our planning. I mean, we have, we have all sorts of different projects that relate back to the climate action plan and it defines a lot of what we do. And I'm very proud of that because I think it truly reflects the ethic of our city and of our citizens. As a coastal community, as an outdoor community, we have a great hunger to be outside, to enjoy nature, to have clean water and clean air and less plastic and less, and no styrofoam. And so this council has been committed to that. We've put energy into it, we talk about it, we celebrate it, and I see that work as continuing into our next terms.
Yes, and, and, uh, you know, I know Kelly gave the three of us credit for being the most, uh, focused on climate issues, but, um, you know, we're fortunate to have a full council full of people that put this issue at the forefront. Um, not the least of which is Joe Mosca, who, um, is currently the chair of the, the, uh, the, uh, Community Choice Energy Organization that we joined, a joint powers authority, uh, organization with the city of San Diego, La Mesa, Imperial Beach and others. And, you know, we're, we're going to do some very important things as part of that organization, not the least of which is, uh, the idea of, uh, um, implementing more local solar that will power a microgrid. That is my big focus because I think that is the future, is that renewable energies that are created right here in our community that go right back into the community after dark. Um, and putting in the, the, uh, the infrastructure in order to make that happen is really important to me. And I think that what you'll see is that something like that will grow from a city of Encinitas leading. And so I thank Joe and Mayor Blakeshire and for their leadership on those issues. Uh, they were part of a subcommittee that, uh, got us to the, to the point where we were, um, prepared to submit the paperwork necessary. And I believe, um, by the new year, we will be up and running or legal and on to the next question, which is how many members of our community wanted, want to, uh, to join the CCA?
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. At this point, we'll ask for closing statements from, and you have a couple of minutes now for each, each candidate. Um, let's start with you, Catherine.
Okay. Uh, well, thank you so much for joining us today. It's, it's, these have been great questions and, you know, I've noticed how many people we've had, 50 or more people almost this whole time, which is really great engagement. And so I just want to express my appreciation for that because it's a really important topic. Um, and so to conclude, you know, there's a lot at stake in this election and the, I feel that the current council has really made important environmental and social and infrastructure improvements that are substantial. And we have created this together with the community. There are projects that we've championed, that we have brought forward, uh, in the last several years, um, and that many of you enjoy every day. Uh, and there's definitely a stark difference in the candidates. So we know that elections are how we resolve our values disputes and I value compassion, as I've said, and I believe compassion is as compassion does. I also value transparency and commitment and facts and always working together with you to determine what is in the best interest of the whole community. Um, I have been endorsed by the environmental organizations, the Sierra Club, the Climate Action Campaign, the, um, League of Conservation Voters, uh, and, and many prominent local environmentalists. And I'm actually, uh, accepting a climate courage award from the Climate Action Campaign later this week, which I, I'm, I'm grateful to have, uh, to be recognized by them because they're a regional organization that really does such great work. I've also been endorsed by the Fire Fighters Association. Um, and I don't offer you empty promises. You know, I speak, uh, the truth as I see it with sincerity. And I hope that I have earned your support for my reelection as Encinitas mayor so that we can continue to tackle our problems and find a path toward yes. So I respectfully ask for your vote to continue our great work. Thank you very much.
Tony, do you want to give us your closing statement?
I would say that, uh, in addition to the recognition that Catherine's getting regionally, she is also the vice chair at Sandag and her, the regional leadership roles that she has played have been very important. So, um, I think that, uh, the community has definitely benefited from that. And, you know, from where I sit, having served two terms, uh, almost eight years, it has been a tremendous honor and, um, those two terms have been as, serving as an at-large member representing the entire community. Um, we went through some districting, so, uh, I am running for a seat, um, in District One, which is the north part of the city. And, um, I am asking for the voters of the north part of the city to support my reelection. Um, I think that we have accomplished a lot and there is a lot more work to do. Um, we have, uh, focused on some very important infrastructure projects. Um, as the chairman of the North County Transit District, I have always been working to make, um, the rail corridor a better neighbor, um, to everyone who lives nearby or within train horn earshot. Um, we have a quiet zone in Cardiff because of the efforts of the council to make sure that the money for that was part of the rebuild that happened when it was double-tracked across the lagoon. And there will be additional projects. We're putting in a, a grade-separated pedestrian crossing, uh, just west of Polackie Central School, which will be a tremendous asset to the, to the neighborhoods. Um, and so the work is very important. I, um, will continue to advocate for more crossings of the rail corridor and, um, at the same time, uh, focusing on addressing some of the issues related to El Comino Real and ways that we can, uh, make that a little bit more livable for the community. Um, I also knew going in, uh, when we were dealing with the housing element, that it was going to be very controversial and difficult, but I had to put my faith in the community that they would recognize that the very difficult work that we were doing was important and that the decisions that we made as a council were, um, the, in the best interest of the community. And we're certainly seeing plenty of, uh, sticks and stones thrown our way, um, because of the, the efforts that we made. But ultimately I think it's incumbent upon, uh, the council to continue that, uh, the effort to make sure that we comply with state law and avoid nasty lawsuits that cost us millions of dollars. So, um, again, I ask the voters of District One, the north part of the, the city to, um, support me for reelection and, and vote, uh, honor before November 3rd for Tony Krantz.
And Kelly? Thank you. Thank you, Tony. Kelly?
So I want to close again by thanking all of you who organized this forum and stuck with us even though there were some last minute changes and challenges. Um, I also want to thank everybody who took the time to hear from us on these key issues in our city because I think we, we're here because we want to solve them. Civic engagement really is carrying a new gravity in a way that I think is historic and I'm really grateful to serve this community who still values that. We are facing immense challenges. We're living in an era of heightened fear and heightened anxiety and it, for good reason. We're living through a pandemic, through climate change, historic civil unrest and true incompetent national leadership. And these are all major causes for us to be concerned. 2020 has presented us with historic challenges of epic proportions. Um, and as local government, I think that we've been tested in ways that very few could have ever imagined. Um, I'm proud to say I have a thicker skin than I ever thought that I would have, um, but that I'm also continuing to lead with an open heart. I'm proud to serve with my fellow city council members. And Joe, I did not mean to say that we're the three most environmental candidates on council because I think we all share that responsibility. I was just hoping to differentiate ourselves as that I do see climate change as the biggest threat, um, to, to our, what way of being. Um, I'm really proud that we have kept our COVID count to the lowest third or fourth in the whole county of San Diego. And I'm really happy that tonight we got to directly discuss the issues of housing and homelessness that are two crises we can only expect to get worse if we fail to act. So I want to acknowledge that there has been an erosion of civility in this community that I think we're all alarmed by. There's online attacks and divisiveness and it's toxic and we must all do our part to rise above it. A division is rooted in fear and it's spurred by misinformation. And over these next 21 days, I ask voters to think critically about the information that you're digesting and sharing, um, and if it's getting our community closer or further away from solutions. I also urge voters to base on your hopes and not on your fears because candidates who want you to act based on your fears will tell you how bad things are and that they're only going to get worse if you don't vote for them. But I reject that because I still think that some of our best days as Encinitas residents are to come. And if I earn your vote, I pledge to foster unity and civility to continue working together and making great strides. So I hope to earn your vote. Kelly Hinsey for Encinita City Council, District Two, honor before November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, at this point, I think I'll turn it back over to Richard, Reverend Richard. What does it sound? Thank you so much for everyone's attendance and your patience with us.
Let me add my thanks as well.
Um, just, uh, one last note that St. Andrews is a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) and therefore we cannot and will not endorse candidates at any time for any reason. Uh, but that doesn't mean we aren't incredibly grateful, uh, for the three of you candidates who spent your time with us this evening and, and brought what I thought was very forthright and nuanced conversation around, uh, very complicated topics that are near and dear to all of us. So thank you for taking that time and, um, putting yourselves forward for public purpose. Uh, at this point, let's go ahead and close our time together with just a brief veneration. We come to this time grateful for all those who made this society for us, who allowed for us to exercise the right and privilege to vote. We give thanks for all the candidates who put themselves forward both here and elsewhere, for the courage to stand up and to speak the things that they believe. Give us that same courage as citizens to go out and do what we can on behalf of the common good and the commonwealth of us all. Amen.
Amen.
All right, folks. Have a good evening. It's always the most awkward part of Zoom. Yeah. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.